Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome the members of council, staff and members of the public to our November the 12th council meeting and call this meeting to order. And it's great to see a good turnout. I just wanted to mention too, I hope everyone had the opportunity to attend the Remembrance Day service in the park yesterday. Was a great event. It was great to see all the schools participate. At this time, I'd like to call Mrs. Pearson to perform the roll call, please.
Thank you. Councillor Clark.
Present.
Councillor Hyatt.
Present.
I do have regrets from Councillor Hera. Councillor Patel.
Present.
Councillor Welsh.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Field.
Present.
Mayor Luisey.
Present.
And we do have a quorum.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson for the Indigenous land acknowledgement, please.
We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral lands of the Chipewa, the Odoawa and the Potawatomi peoples referred to collectively as the Anishna Bag. The town of Petrolia is located on land associated with the Huron Track Treaty, number 29 of 1827. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work and play, and we are committed to working respectfully within the land and the Indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. At this time, I'd like to request that council declare a conflict of interest now or at the appropriate time and complete the necessary paperwork. Seeing none, we'll move on. We have before you item number seven is the adoption of the agenda before you tonight. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by councillor Hyatt, seconded by councillor Clark. Any discussion regarding that agenda before you tonight?
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia to adopt as presented the agenda of the November 12th, 2024, regular session of council.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us now on to the consideration of the minutes of a previous meeting held on October 28th, and that's the regular council meeting. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put those minutes on the floor for discussion, please. Move by councillor Patel, seconded by councillor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia to adopt as circulated minutes of the regular meeting of council held on October 28th, 2024.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions? Any comments from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us on to the minutes of a public information session held on October 28th regarding the 2025 water and sewer rates. And again, I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by councillor Clark, seconded by deputy mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia to adopt as circulated minutes of the public information session for water and sewer held on October 28th, 2024.
Thank you. And before I call the vote, I just wanted to let council and everyone know through feedback received during the public session to review the water and sewer rates, the treasurer has taken public comments received and has updated the proposed rate schedule for water. This updated schedule will be part of the public budget meeting on November 26th. Any questions from council regarding the motion before you? I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us on now to the moment of reflection. I'd like to ask that everyone please stand. Thank you. That'll take us to our roundtable announcements. And tonight, as councilors are aware, I rotate this. First tonight will be councillor Welsh, please.
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Field.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councillor Clark.
Just, I'm sure you've already, you've already mentioned it and will again, but great turnout out front here yesterday morning. I don't believe I've ever seen the park so full on Remembrance Day, so I think, great job, Petrolia.
It was. Thank you. Councillor Clark. Councillor Hyatt.
Nothing to share, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Patel.
Just a reflection of what was already shared. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a few items since our last meeting a couple of weeks ago. I attended and dropped the puck at the U17 World Challenge on Friday, November 1st at the Greenwood Recreation Centre. The game is between Canada Red and Sweden. It was a good game with a great crowd. Special thanks to TSL, GM Mark Perrin, volunteers and municipal staff involved with the game. I took part in the parade laying of the town of Petrolia's wreath and service at Victoria Park on Sunday, November 3rd. I also attended the Legion after the service for greetings and refreshments. I attended the county council meeting held on Wednesday, November 6th, followed by a retirement function for Mr. Andrew Taylor and will continue to keep council informed. I attended the Remembrance Day service on Monday, November 11th in Victoria Park and attended the dinner and service at the Petrolia Legion Brants 216 and brought greetings on behalf of the town, council and staff. That's all I have. That'll take us now on to item number 11, which is correspondence. And I'd ask for a mover and a seconder for items A to D. And just before we do that, I do want to mention item number C. That was dealt with at county council regarding the new childcare facility for 29 children being proposed to be built or will be built at Meteville. So I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that motion on the floor. Move by deputy mayor Field, seconded by councillor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia to receive and file correspondence items 11A through D.
Any discussion from council? Councillor Welsh.
I'm just wondering if you, when you're at county council, if you could request an update on the, the current childcare situation as, as reflects capacity? Because they had given us a capacity report. I'm hoping that's better now. And also they did an RFP recently, and I'm wondering how many people they had successful in that RFP?
Yeah, I don't.
How many they awarded?
Yeah, I think that was just in the London Free Press on Saturday, so I'm not sure if they've got, had time to get that in yet. But why don't, why don't we consider waiting until they're ready to?
The RFP is closed a long time ago, but we never did see an update, I don't believe.
Yeah, I think they were asking for proposals to operate the, the new facility. Is that the same thing?
No, this is previous to this, previous to the announcement about the new facility.
Yeah, I can ask him if he wishes to maybe consider giving us an update on, yeah, it'd be nice to get an update on the whole thing later on.
Yes.
If we could on, yeah, okay. All right, we'll make a note of that. Thank you. Anything else from council? I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us, at this time, for the correspondence for consideration and motion. We do not have any for tonight, but we do have a couple of delegations and presentations. First on our list tonight is Mrs. Sherry Hamilton. If you'd like to come forward, please. And this is on behalf of the Lampton Seniors Advisory Committee, and all of council has a copy of her presentation. Mrs. Hamilton, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and members of the public for taking time out of your schedules to get this one-on-one update on what the Lampton Seniors Advisory Committee has been up to. For those of you who are not familiar with the LSAC, let's just say, we are a conduit between the taxpayers who we recognise and respect as senior citizens and the municipalities of which they live. We do this by informing Lampton County on any issues we hear of within our municipalities. This presentation is an attempt to educate municipal council members on the functions, accomplishments and challenges that we have come up against in the last almost two years. Some members of the public and council may not be aware of when this committee began. It was between 2017 and 2019 that the NSCL and the CLAS began gathering information to identify the needs. Communication at that time was minimal. No services existed? Yes, they existed, but the lack of communications between the service providers and the seniors was minute. So many seniors and their families were kept out of the loop. A task force was created to investigate the needs and assist in the creation of the terms of reference for the seniors advisory committee. Very early on, they decided that Lampton County had an aging population and that Lampton County had a higher percentage of seniors than other parts of Ontario. The task force met in March of 2020, so that was right at the beginning of our COVID dilemmas. The task force did take into consideration 13 other areas that had some form of, of a age-friendly group. Those included places like Arnpryor, Barry, Cambridge, Gray Bruce, Grand River, Frontenac-Kingston, Hamilton, Peterborough, Niagara, Ottawa, Tecumseh, Toronto and even Windsor, Essex. So the background, the premise of this committee is that all seniors are entitled to age safely and with dignity. Our duties, as taken from appendix B of the report from the task force, says we are to engage with seniors in our respective municipalities to gain knowledge and understanding of their needs. So how is this, this committee comprised? We have 11 municipalities in this committee represented by one individual on each municipality, a county rep, a county staff member and a representative from the NSCL, which is Navigating Seniors Care Lampton. The main goal of the committee is to ensure the community supports healthy aging for our seniors. This includes access to services such as healthcare, transportation and representation in community decision-making. We've all heard the term aging in place. Aging in place is probably the best thing we can do at this time in all levels of government as we try to address the housing shortages and the rising cost of living throughout our country today. What is the function? The committee is to liaise with our seniors and to act as a conduit to the county so that they can share identifiable issues with the municipalities. So what are our priorities? To advocate, to increase the sense of belonging of seniors in their communities, to improve access and to promote the residents to plan for their elder years. In general, we are living longer and must ensure a plan is in place for proper care when our abilities do not match our needs. Our chair, Bill Weber, attended a conference in Toronto that was facilitated by the RTO, which is the Retired Teachers Organisation. Their focus was on living to 100 because more and more of us are living into our 90s and into 100. So what are our accomplishments? We participated in the Age Friendly Expo the 1st of May by sending three of our committee representatives to the planning committee at Sarnia. I was one of those volunteers that helped in the planning of that function. The SAC had a booth at the event, but at the time, we lacked any display items, any equipment to identify who we were or what our task was. Even getting the funds for the table registration was a challenge. Unfortunately, we could not get transportation sponsorship, so getting people from the rural areas to Point Edward was difficult. The event was very successful, but was primarily attended by those individuals who lived closer to the venue or had alternate transportation. We supported in writing the county of Lampton in their initiative to look into transportation, the needs, issues and possible solutions. We supported the placing of kiosks in the libraries to educate seniors on services and how to access them. We also spent time to educate ourselves on what is available and where the gaps in service, services are. I personally attended the Petrolia Farmers Market on October the 5th, so I could interact to give you, people who are making decisions, what the input, the feedback is from our local seniors. I also have attended Boomers luncheons that are held at the YMCA here in town and spoke with attendees there on a couple of occasions in regards to feedback. So the challenges. Funding, recognition and transportation. Funding, because any material we share when we're out in the public is given to us by Age Friendly Lampton or LEO. Many seniors do not use social media. They do not use Instagram, they do not use Facebook, and a lot of them can't even afford a computer. So we have to find better ways to get information to them. Funding would be a great way to start advertising. Recognition, many people who run into us think we're part of the AFL or LEO. Transportation. Numerous services are provided in Sarnia and getting our seniors there are problematic. Not everyone can afford a car, and those that do have a vehicle may not have a desire to drive in inclement weather. LEO is available at a cost and must be pre-planned in advance. That is not always possible. Last fall, Lampton County Council heard a wonderful presentation by Lampton Shores on the success of their transit system. It gets seniors into Sarnia for appointments, shopping and social events. It connects businesses and employees to otherwise unattainable staffing and jobs. It assists also in allowing people to live in the northern municipalities and find work in the larger city. So what are the next step? Support, support and more support. Support the committee through seeking consultations on topics that affect seniors in the community. Each municipality has different issues and yet some similar ones. Support the committee by holding and attending events in the community where networking, working with residents can occur. Support requests from the seniors advisory committee for input on projects or policies. These projects and policies that you're making decisions on just might be enhanced by some of the information that the seniors advisory committee is able to gather when they're doing their outreach with seniors in their respective communities. So to close, in my opinion, it is important to remember that we are just a conduit to Lampton County, that ultimately our comments, our suggestions come to you in the form of committee minutes. We are to engage and gain knowledge and understanding of the needs. We provide no service. I know that it is a county advisory committee, but I feel many seniors in our communities are still homeowners, taxpayers and your constituents. They have been our nurses, our girl guide leaders, our veterans that have defended our freedom, our hockey coaches and the auto mechanics that have touched our lives. Our seniors have a wealth of knowledge, experience and have earned our respect. They should be treasured. They should not be ignored or set aside because they are sometimes frail. We as a society, as a community, must set an example for the rest of Ontarians and show that Petrolia is willing to give just as much time, effort and funding to our seniors as other age groups. We'd like to thank you for listening to this information and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you for that. That was very informative. And just to talk about transportation, I just wanted to let you know, when they set up that bus trip from Sarnia to London, and I think they stopped in a few places along the way, I fought and tried at county council to see if they'd stop at Reese's Corners so that we could maybe get there and pick up some of the residents, but that failed. So that was unfortunate. But I will open up to council. Any questions from council? Councillor Welsh.
I'm just wondering if your committee has asked the county of Lampton for some budget considerations when they do their budget for?
Well, I think this, if, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Liz, I think this is the idea of why we put this motion on the floor, so that each one of the representatives would approach their councils and ask for support, because we probably will be doing that, but we wanted to let everyone know what we've been up to, what we could do and couldn't do because of a lack of funding. So I hope to see that done sometime in the future.
Any other questions? Oh, councillor Welsh, go ahead.
There is new OTIF funding, which is a transit fund, and I'm wondering if your committee would be looking into that and perhaps supporting that at the county level and maybe pushing for something for seniors specifically?
Well, at this time, through you, Mr. Mayor, at this time, we had surprised, supported the county in doing some kind of a survey to get information on whether people were interested in transportation. I believe they got the funding to do that outreach, but we meet every two months, so I'm hoping that we might be able to get some information back in November or January in regards to what the results of that initial survey was. I'm sure we'll discuss it. I hope we do.
I could speak to that too. I think it was somewhere around $50,000, but the county did apply for that. Okay, any other questions from council? Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
Yeah, through you. Thanks for the presentation. It's great to see you and see the Wiebers here as well, as well as a senior from Enniskillen, councillor Callan, and the other 35 people that you brought to support the seniors. So I appreciate that. But what I, would it be a benefit if we were to make a motion that we support the consideration of funding at budget time and send something from this council that, you know, we are endorsing our seniors, that we want to see something? I believe that, as you stated, it's a county function, but if we send that support to the county for budget, that maybe it'd be a consideration. It doesn't sound like you're looking for millions of dollars. You might just be looking for enough to get everything started and then?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. I would, I would accept that. But before we go any further, I'd like to, I had a note here too. I'd like to ask Mr. Bill Weber and Ginger's wife to stand out. Bill is a former warden of Lampton County, and I think, believe he's still chairman of this committee. Please stand and welcome. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Field, would you like to?
So I'd like to make that a motion. I think Mandy was typing something.
Okay, okay, I've got a mover. I need a seconder, seconded by councillor Welsh. Any discussion from council regarding that motion? I'll ask the clerk, when she's prepared or finishes that, to read that back, please, so we know what we're voting on.
And that is for the council, the town of Petrolia, to extend support to the Lampton Seniors Advisory Committee for application of funds during the county of Lampton budget deliberations in 2025.
Any discussions from council? Go ahead. Is there a value that you're requesting?
No, through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hyatt. We have presented at Enniskillen, it was a great presentation. We've also presented at St. Clair Township. We have presented at Brooks Alvinston. Everyone that we have presented to, even Lampton Shores, is very supportive of this initiative. They asked the same questions. How much are you looking for? Well, I'd like $500,000, but that's not realistic. And considering we started with nothing, that the table we used at the expo was funded by Lampton Shores because we didn't have the money for the registration, I say we'd be grateful to get anything that we can work with for, for advertising.
Okay. Any other comments from council? Councillor Patel, go ahead.
Presentation, thank you. I'm just wondering, circling back to the survey, would there be some information that could come back if the county is agreed to move forward with that survey for the seniors? Or is there something that can be initiated here in Petrolia to start within our own municipality?
I could maybe speak to that. I will probably get that information from county council that I can bring back here, if you like.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Patel. I imagine it will show up in our minutes if we get into any further discussions. We did have a representative come to us at, at our committee meeting and discussed transportation and, and the needs. And unfortunately, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, last fall, when Lampton Shores came and presented on their transportation, it was kind of like closing the door after the horse was left. The initial grants for the inter-community transit, which took place back in mid, well, I would say 2015, 2017, that's when Petrolia needed to step up and ask to be part of the initial grant applications in order to have a bus stop. By the time the funding was already handed out, it was too late to add a stop. So we're only about eight years behind. So I'm hoping that this survey will show that there is a need. I have a plethora of copious amounts of information here that say transportation actually affects our seniors as far as mood disorders and dementia and premature mortality. It's such a crucial part of what we're trying to accomplish, is to connect our people, you know, to the services and the social events that they need to get to.
Anything else from council? If not, Mrs. Hamilton, thank you for coming to address council.
Okay.
I think we have a motion. We still have a motion. Yeah, I'll call the vote.
Thank you.
Did I get a seconder for that?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries.
Did you want to hear the feedback I received? I, I'm not sure.
Oh, you can maybe leave it with the clerk, if you like, or send her a copy. I'll ask one question. Here, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Thomas Hamilton. Obviously, you've given us an overview of what, you know, the seniors advisory of Lampton County is looking at. What specifically are the seniors of Petrolia looking for?
Well, at the Boomers meetings, I ran into a number of people who had mobility issues. One lady said she'd like to go into more shops downtown, but they don't always have the ramps out. And when you're in a wheelchair or some mobility device, you can't go in and tell them to put the ramp out so that you can go in. It's a misnomer. It's just not possible. Again, they don't do social media, Instagram, Facebook. They're the, the, one lady said she's of the jitterbug era, not the tweeting Twitter A lot of them didn't even know we had the kiosk across the street at the library, which was really an informative way to get information to our seniors. The farmer's market, transportation, they can't get to social engagements or the movie theatres in Sarnia because they have no way to get there. Transportation, because they don't have competitive shopping here in Petrolia. A lot of them were carpooling to get into Sarnia to get more competitive pricing. A lot of them are telling me that they don't have additional pensions, whether it be from the big three, from schools, from oil and gas. They, they are living on their CPP and they can't afford to shop locally. When I was at Boomers, they, they need to see more healthy meals provided. They're paying $15 to attend those luncheons and they're getting chocolate pudding with hard candy in it. This is what we're feeding our seniors? A lot of them don't like that. They say that they're really not wanting to go to those YMCA luncheons because all they want to do is talk about how old they're getting and how they have to address their pain and suffering. They want to see more things that are more positive and upbeat, hobbies, you know, maybe an armchair traveler or a cooking segment up there. And then I think everybody said they can't afford a taxi to get up to the Y's, so they're not going to walk it, so they just stay home. So that's about all I have.
Okay. Thank you again for coming to address council.
Welcome.
Next on our agenda, we have a delegation regarding Lisa Vanderwal and Kelly Bailey. If you'd like to come forward, please. And they're the only two we have listed to speak for this delegation, so the floor is yours. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Luisey, members of town council and residents of Petrolia. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Kelly Bailey, and I grew up in Petrolia and currently reside in Oil Springs. I am a mother to two young hockey players who play for Lampton Attack Girls Hockey Association and Petrolia Minor Hockey Association. I am also an alumnus of Petrolia Minor Hockey. In addition to being a parent, I own a small local business. I coach in both associations in Petrolia and serve as the vice president of Lampton Attack Girls Hockey Association. I am joined here today by Lisa Vanderwal, a local pharmacist, and Shereen Lozon, a child protection worker from Lampton County. Shereen also serves on the board for the Petrolia Minor Hockey Association. Both Lisa- Both Lisa and Shereen have two children involved in Lampton Attack and Petroya Minor Hockey. We are also joined here tonight by several supporters in the gallery. We are here to discuss an important issue that affects our community's quality of life and future growth, the need for a new additional ice pad in Petroya. As we look at Petroya's current population of over 6,000, which has grown by 4.7% since 2016, it's clear that our community is thriving. By 2031, we are projected to exceed 7,000 residents. This pro, this growth brings both challenges and opportunities, particularly in our recreational facilities. One of the pillars of our town council's strategic plan is to enhance the remarkable quality of life for all our residents. That's why people don't leave. Most of my elementary and secondary school classmates still live in the community. Recreational activities are vital to this mission. They provide opportunities for residents to engage, bond, and strengthen their ties to Petroya and one another. In an additional ice pad and a renovation of the Greenwood Recreation Center could reflect Petroya's distinct culture and features within the facility. It would improve Petroya's inclusive fare and accessible community for everyone at every stage of life. Unfortunately, the current arena cannot accommodate the demand for ice time. The Petroya Minor Hockey Association, Lampton Attack Girls Hockey Association, the Petroya Skating Club, and other associations are struggling with insufficient ice availability. The Petroya Skating Club, for instance, cannot host any Skate Canada events due to this lack of ice. They are turning young skaters away, stunting the growth of our future athletes and limiting economic opportunities. Lampton Attack is experiencing its highest enrollment ever at 202 players. Yet many players are left without adequate practice or game time in Petroya and are being forced to purchase ice further and further away from their home center and outside of Lampton County. Lampton Attack aims to more than triple its current ice times, seeking to add an additional 20 hours per week in Petroya. This number will greatly increase as we are a rapidly growing organization. Due to the lack of current ice, we were unable to establish a U-22 team and are not capable of hosting tournaments, which not only affects our organization, but our community as hosting tournaments provides support of local businesses in the area and showcases what Petroya has to offer. PMHA, the Petroya Minor Hockey Association, has experienced significant growth in recent years. Teams are expanding their rosters from an appropriate 12 to 13 players per team to 16 to 17 in our younger age groups as they cannot accommodate the additional ice time that appropriately sized teams would require. Limited ice time during games can significantly hinder children's development in these sports. It's essential that they have ample opportunities to play and grow. Most of the available ice time is consumed by game slots, which leaves teams with little option but to have shared practices. This situation is highly unusual for competitive hockey organizations, highlighting the need for a second ice pad in Petroya. Currently, Petroya Minor Hockey has 312 participants spread across 19 teams with just slightly more than 33 hours of ice time available each week. Think of that, a competitive hockey program that cannot even schedule one practice and one game for each team every week. Petroya Minor Hockey numbers are increasing, especially in our younger age groups, with over 160 registered age 10 or younger. The future of hockey is indeed bright in Petroya. If this trend continues, along with the growth of families in Petroya, Petroya's population, we risk having to turn children away from sports and recreation. With over 30 kids on the ice during most practices already, we have outgrown the available ice time. Denying children access to local sports does not support sustainable community recreation or provide equal opportunities for athletes compared to other surrounding organizations. This brings us to our second point, responsible governance. As council members, you are well aware of your duty to address the needs of our growing community. This vision represents the collective voice of our hockey and recreation community. We've already gathered over 840 signatures and counting in support of a second ice pad in Petroya, demonstrating that our residents recognize this need. The Greenwood Arena serves as the hub and vital heartbeat of our community, operating at full capacity from the opening of the rink in September until its closure in April. During this period, every available hour open to associations is fully utilized, highlighting the, highlighting the facility's importance and demand within our community. The Ontario Minor Hockey Association report, recently reported that minor hockey registrations are on the rise with an impressive 87% retention rate from 2021 to 2022. The numbers speak for themselves. At least 93% of players in the U-9 to U-13 age group are returning to hockey each year in Ontario. If we do not expand our ice capacity now, we risk losing these young athletes to communities that can offer them the facilities they need in turn, risking the loss of families seeking to locate in our area to other communities. I can speak to the growth of these organizations from personal experience. I was part of the first all-girls team for Petroya Minor Hockey in the early 2000s. This initiative contributed to the establishment of the Lampton Attack Girls Hockey Association, driven not only by the increase in boys' hockey participation, but also by the growing interest among young women wanting to play the sport. Having grown up and played most of my hockey career in Petroya and still participating in a recreational league on Thursday evenings, I know that the lack of ice time is not a new issue that has arisen in the past year or two. Instead, it has been a growing concern for organizations and community members for the past decade. Finally, let's consider sustainability. A second new ice pad is not just an investment in support, sports. It's an investment in community cohesion and well-being. With many plans for residential development in Petroya, the potential for increased family presence is immense. Petroya is estimated to have 1,500 new residential building lots in various stages of development, some of which may be completed in the very new, near future. A new ice pad would not only serve current residents, but also attract new families to our town, enriching our community fabric the same way the Petroya Squires, Petroya Oilers, and Petroya Jets have made us so proud to be part of this great community in the past. It would also allow the possibility of hosting additional tournaments, carnivals, and special events that could bring many people to Petroya, increasing business revenue and tourism. Moreover, similar to the Moretown Sports Complex, we would have the ability to keep the ice pad operational year-round. This opens up numerous opportunities. Renting it out for ball hockey, roller skating, or keeping the ice in year-round on a single pad and offering other events on the other pad. This versatility not only generates revenue, but also provides a space for community engagement throughout the year. Building a new ice pad would also benefit other local arenas. East Lampton Minor Hockey Association has been, Association has been around since the mid 80s under various names, and it currently has 250 registered players on 18 teams. They currently use approximately 23 hours of ice per week at the East Lampton Community Center and 22 hours at the Brook Elvingston Community Complex. If they had access to additional ice, they could use six or more hours a week. If Petroya had an additional ice pad, Petroya Minor Hockey and Lampton Attack could utilize, utilize extra time at the new ice pad and free up additional hours for East Lampton Minor Hockey or Brook Elvingston Skating Club at the Brook Elvingston Inwood Community Complex and the East Lampton Community Complex. In addition to the petition, we have provided letters and information from the presidents of Petroya Minor Hockey Association, Lampton Attack Girls Hockey Association, Petroya Skating Club, and one of the founders of the Lampton Attack Girls Hockey Association, who has been involved with Petroya Minor Hockey for a number of years. In conclusion, we urge the council to consider the profound positive impact a new ice pad would have on our community. It aligns with the town of Petroya's strategic goals of enhancing quality of life, ensuring responsible governance, and fostering the sustainable community. Let's work together to create a facility that serves our current residents and, more importantly, future generations, fostering growth in our community. Today, I am making two recommendations. First, I am recommending that the council apply for funding through the Community Sport and Recreation infrastructure fund, Stream 2, which provides up to 10 million for the construction of new and transformative sport and recreation facilities with the assistance of a grant writing company. Second, I recommend that we establish a formal committee with partners from council and the community to make this a reality and to communicate updates back to the town council. This is an opportunity to build a stronger, more connected community that encourages collaboration. We envision a community that promotes accessible recreation and enriching community life by upgrading and expanding our current arena. It's time for more ice. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to your questions and support in making this vision a reality.
Thank you. Almost.
The bells only went off a few minutes ago.
Before I open it up to council, a couple of things, and I mean, I know all about ice time. I spent a lot of time in the arena for years and years, and prime ice time's a concern. My question is, they're not all Petroya residents, and are you going to the surrounding municipalities to see if they'll help fund for this project?
Yes, thank you. Through Mayor Luisey, we, uh, yes, we are, there is potential to go to the other communities or look at collaborating with the local communities.
I'm glad to hear that because if we're looking at 15 or 20 million or more to do a second facility, depending on where you put it, we could never afford that alone. We just couldn't do it. But if the arena is getting to the stage where maybe one day it'll have to be replaced, and it'd be nice if we could, even if it's not in Petroya, to put it somewhere where all the municipalities that do not have an arena would contribute to the operation and to build this facility. But I'll stop there. I do have a, a motion that I'd like council to consider later, but I want to open it up to council for any questions first. So any member of council, any questions? Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead, please.
Yeah, through you. Thank you for your presentation. Looks like you have a lot of support here tonight. You know, I think when they built the arena a number of years ago, I think I've seen three, three or four different numbers. You know, it was committees that was formed to do it. And, you know, I'm, I'm pretty proud that my father was part of that committee that, that helped build it. I think that we need to definitely take a look at our own arena because I've heard five years, 10 years, 15 years for the replacement of that. I think we definitely, to your point where there is a committee, I, I think that if we move forward with a committee for a community, it's not Petroya's arena, it's a community arena. You're from Oil Springs?
Correct.
Yeah. The hunters are from Petroya. We'll disclaim them, okay? But they're from, they're from Inniskillin, right? Yeah, they're from Inniskillin, but this is going to take a community. It's going to take a bigger area.
Absolutely.
To help bring this forward. And it's going to take all of you to support and to, to go to your, your councils as well. And that, you know, we have firsthand, Inniskillin is here tonight to listen, so you'll be able to present to them quite soon, too. But no, I, I think that this is, it's time for us to take a look at our arena. You know, is, is something going to happen tomorrow? No. But I think a number of years ago, it took a long time for them to do it as well and what they moved it up to. So I think planning for the future, you know, we took five years to plan a 150 party. I think it, this is a good time for us to start looking at what we're doing. And let's, you know, be able to determine, is it five years for arenas, is it 10 years for arena? And what's the next stage? Because if we're replacing our current arena, we're not just adding an ice pad. We're looking at a bigger project. So I appreciate your presentation tonight. And, and you know, I think that it's definitely got to be a bigger community that comes together. But I know we are in the middle of it. So, uh, you know, we'll definitely take that part.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. And just for your information, a few years ago, we looked at expanding out the back. I bet I need to be aware, too, that we own the property where the arena is, but out the back and the site is the Fair Board of the Agricultural Society own that. But anyway, any other comments or questions from council?
I was just going to say the same thing. You mentioned this has been a decade, but I know that Chief Cousins and I can attest
that this has been far longer than a decade because we ran our kids around more than 15 years ago to every arena in the county for hockey practices as well. And, and as the Mayor Luisey mentioned, you know, adding an additional pad to our arena is almost a no-go, right? We don't own any property in order to make that happen. I like his idea, actually, of expanding the, to have an arena outside of Petroya that, that is funded and, and managed by all the outlying communities.
Thank you, councillor Clark. And, and the other thing, too, is the arena floor is relatively what I consider in good shape. You could keep the floor. You've got the refrigeration. You could just increase the refrigeration. You got the Zamboni that could use two, two arenas. But anyway, I'll stop there. Councillor Patel.
Thank you through you. Great presentation. Not new information. I have a lot of history with Petroya and the arena and hockey, and I would love for Petroya to take the lead on this. I don't know what that entails or what I'm volunteering this for, but I, I really think it's important that we embrace it and move forward. And if there's a committee foremade and you need some help with that, then please reach out.
Thank you, councillor Patel. I do have a motion, I think that was circulated to council, that you could consider or add or amend, and I'll read it to you just to see if that's acceptable. That the Director of Parks and Recreation and Facilities be directed to look further into the logistics of upgrading the current arena and expand to include a second ice surface at Greenwood Arena and that the proposal in principle include information around contributions from surrounding municipalities that do not operate arenas that have residents that utilize activities in Petroya and possibly starting the fundraising initiatives, including, but not limited to, expanding a fund specific for this proposed project through our Petroya Community Foundation that we already have, that we could set one up for the, the new community center arena. But I'll just ask council, are you okay with that? And I'd like to ask you, how do you feel about that? We could still look at a committee structure later on, but I think this would at least get it started. But again, I do want to pass on, and for those that are involved, some of the surrounding municipalities had a problem contributing $10,000 to our, to our arena, which is a bit discouraging because it basically loses about 300,000. And we don't mind supporting that because it keeps the cost of the ice time down for the users. And we want the children and as many people to use that facility as possible. All right, I'll ask council again. Are we okay with that, or do you need it read again?
Uh, maybe if you can read it again.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to read that, please, just to keep it official.
That the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities be directed to look further into the logistics of upgrading the current arena to explain, and expand to include a second ice surface at Greenwood Arena. And that the proposal in principle include information around contributions from surrounding municipalities that do not operate arenas, that have residents that utilize activities in Petroya and possibly fundraising initiatives, including, but not limited, limited to, expanding a fund specific for the proposed project through the Petroya Community Foundation.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson.
I just have, if I can speak to it now?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
I guess I'm, I'm just wondering that if we're, um, definitely, I, I like the part that Julie, or that she starts to look into this. I just, around the neighboring municipalities, if there's not a plan in place, are we putting the cart before the horse? You know, I think there's definitely got to be a committee, and there has to be a plan to move forward to go to the other communities. I, I just don't know what the logistics of going to a neighboring municipality and say, are you going to help pay for this? If they don't know what we're actually even looking at until we get this, this report back. But, you know, I don't want to put a, a hamper or damper on it. I want it to move forward. I, I would think that a committee could maybe start doing some planning and helping, but I just don't know if going to the other municipalities or understanding that yet.
It's a good point, Deputy Mayor Field. I think the idea, though, is just to get this started. I think it even, even if our Parks and Recreation Board that had, represents council could start to take a look at it and maybe either set up a subcommittee or a direct committee to get started. But I think, I, I agree, when we really go to the other municipalities, we need a, a plan. But I think this is just to get things started. And I, I want to mention, we've already applied for that grant already. And that's usually about, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Charlebois, is that's usually about 53%. It's, it's, but the 10 million amongst 444 municipalities is not a lot of money. But, Mrs. Charlebois, can you speak to that?
Certainly. Through your worship, yeah, we've already applied for that grant for some activities out by the, by the Y. And it's, so it's closed already, closed a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, maybe. And you're right, this grant program, it's, there aren't a lot of grant programs by the province or the federal government, actually, that are for recreational stuff because we need the more basic stuff like fix the road, fix the water, fix. that are for recreational stuff, because we need the more basic stuff, like fix the road, fix the water, fix the sewer. So that's where most of the money goes. So these grants are very rare. Hopefully, this one, they'll come up with a second round, we're hoping, because it's two hundred million and four hundred and forty-four municipalities, each can apply for up to ten million. That doesn't last very long. So there probably will be another one in the spring. Hopefully, staff can come back with a plan and we can apply as a community, like a broader community, because when you apply for grants at the federal provincial level, if you have, like in our case, it'd be with four municipalities working together, raising their own funds together and applying for the grant together, it carries a lot more weight. Or five.
Councilor Clark?
I'm just wondering, then, if we should reword this and basically just leave the first paragraph in place until such time as the Parks and Rec group can come back with some more information before we basically remove the approaching outlying communities portion for now.
That's a good point. I'd have no problem, but I'd like the Parks and Rec to at least speak to it, because we have representatives on Parks and Rec here and bring back a recommendation or recommend a committee and who would maybe do that. So the only thing is, this, this motion really just gets things started. We could still consider approving this motion and then bring something back from Parks and Recreation for council's consideration.
Your worship, it is that the proposal that is being brought back include information. So that's, I'm not sure if I emphasized that when I was repeating the motion, so I apologize for that. It's that the proposal in principle be returned to include information around contributions from surrounding municipalities and on possible fundraising initiatives.
So, sorry, so we're not, we're not approaching them, we're just getting ideas on what we can do to approach.
We are. They can certainly go and, you know, state the need for this facility, and I think that's important. And then we can bring back information. Okay, thank you for that. Councilor Patel.
Thank you, through you. Correct me if I'm wrong, did you say that you're presenting to the other municipalities?
Through Mayor Lucy. We haven't have anything set up yet, but that is definitely has been on our agenda to look at that. Our efforts to date so far have focused more on the overwhelming, overwhelming need for an additional ice pad in Petroya. So we just, the establishment of a committee would be the forum to facilitate details of the plan of action going forward.
Okay, so through you, can I ask that as you proceed with these delegations or that you would come back to council? Let us know what you found out or any updates and let them know that we're going to approach them at some point. And I think that that's a good reference point when we're starting. We don't necessarily have details yet, but I think that they should know the conversation is about, is happening.
Thank you, Councilor Patel. I think the most important thing is to stress the need, not just for the town of Petroya, but for all the residents or people that use the facility. I think that's important. All right.
I was just going to say, would the correspondence back to council not come through Parks and Rec?
Yes, yes.
So technically, they would
Make a recommendation back to council.
Through the Parks and Rec Department, though, right? Like through Julie and through the Parks and Rec Committee.
So this motion is giving that direction, that this is now being taken to our Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities, and then the correspondence comes back to us at this table, sorry, to the council at this table through that.
And any
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson.
And any other outside committees would come back through us or her as well? Okay.
All right. Are we okay with that? Call the vote. All
I actually need to move in a seconder.
Okay, I'll need a move by Councilor Welsh, seconded by Councilor Clark. Any further discussion one last time? All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you for coming to address council and keep us informed. Because we're excited about it, too.
Thank you.
On to the community announcement, recognition and awards. I'll ask for a move in a seconder to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Councilor Clark, seconded by Councilor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to receive as information only, the November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, community announcements as presented.
Busy time, it's great. Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just that we expect to make the Victoria Playhouse twenty twenty-five season announcement on Tuesday.
Great news. I think that people will be excited to see that, or hear that. All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to the first opportunity for the public to address council. I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to address council at this time. It's about a separate issue? Okay, please come forward then, and please state your name and your address, please.
Dale Aiken. My address is forty forty-two Mulberry Place in Petroya. Been there over thirty years at that address, much longer in Petroya, but I, we read that there was some talk about chickens in Petroya. And I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but my next door neighbor has chickens and rabbits a lot. This summer has been very hot, and the smell was beyond belief. There was quite a few days where we couldn't enjoy our pool at all because the backyard was just not inhabitable.
Can I, can I just jump in quickly? This is on the agenda for tonight regarding the chickens. I don't know if you've read that. And the motion, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think Councilor Hyatt put this forward, and it basically is asked for a survey from the people to state whether they're in favor or not. And then we'll have, we're considering, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilor Hyatt, that after we get a survey out or input from the community, we'll have a public meeting. Because you're right, I'm concerned about setting a precedent on once we allow chickens.
So they're not allowed at this point?
They're not allowed at this point, no.
Because
They are not allowed.
Wayne, and I was told they were allowed by the neighbor.
No, they're not allowed. And rabbits, maybe, one thing. What if you want to bring a horse or a cow or
Well, that's it, you know, it's next.
Yeah. So I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just wanted you to know, if you please stay, you will hear the discussion when council deals with that.
Okay.
But I, I got your message and it's recorded of your concern. But please, when that survey comes out, please tell us. Before you go, though, I'll just see if this council have any questions. Thank you for coming to address council.
Thank you.
Anyone else here wishing to address council on a separate issue that we can't deal with the ice time or the seniors, we've already dealt with that? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We have a report from Mrs. Mandy Pearson, Director of Legislative Services, Clerk Deputy Operations, regarding the two thousand twenty-five Council and Advisory Committee Meeting Calendar. I'll ask for a move in a seconder to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Move by Councilor Clark, seconded by Councilor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to endorse the report regarding the two thousand twenty-five Council Advisory and Committee Meeting Calendar is presented by Mandy Pearson, Director of Legislative Services Clerk, and that the clerk be directed to remove the town hall engagement sessions from the council calendar and procedures, and that the two thousand twenty-five Council and Advisory Committee Meeting Calendars be approved.
Thank you. And before we move on, I just wanted to state, the reason I've taken that, recommended we not do that is we still have two opportunities at every council for anyone to come forward to discuss any issues. All right, I'll call the vote. For any discussion first, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We have a report from Mandy Pearson, Director of Legislative Services, Clerk Deputy Operations, regarding false alarm bylaws for the OPP and fire. I'll ask for a move in a seconder to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Councilor Patel, seconded by Councilor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to adopt the report of the Director of Legislative Services Clerk Deputy Operations dated November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, regarding false alarm bylaws for the Lampton OPP and the Petroya Northern Skill and Fire Department.
Any questions from council? Councilor Welsh?
Do any of the, I guess, funds realized from possible fines go directly back in to support these two budgets?
Oh, I'll ask, oh, do you want to speak to that?
It is through the accounts receivable process. So in the case of the OPP, it'll be offsetting the OPP budget lines for the municipal component of the, of the contracts. For the fire, it will be for the Petroya side of that. Eneskillen has also been provided with the information and the copy of the fire department bylaw. Should they wish to pass that as well, then their, theirs would be through there. So it's not a sixty forty split on that income. That is a full Petroya recovery on that income.
So to answer your question, it's yes. Councilor Welsh?
And would that be only for Petroya-related false alarms?
We can only invoice for Petroya, yes. Eneskillen would have to invoice for their own.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Councilor Hyatt?
Uh, thank you. I specifically have a concern about the bylaw, and I don't know if you prefer to talk about it now or to talk about it during the bylaw.
Well, you can, well, we can do it now or the, we can do it at the bylaw if you'd like, but I think this would be the more appropriate time. And then you can change or amend the bylaw if that's necessary. So I think you should bring it forward now.
Okay, so my concern with the bylaw is with the OPP, with the OPP bylaw for false alarms related to the sixth alarm and termination of services from the OPP. The sixth alarm could be the time when the OPP is actually needed, so I think termination of services is not appropriate.
And good point. And I did ask Mrs. Pearson about that, and I'll ask you to speak to that, if you would, please.
Worship through you, to Councilor Hyatt. So that, that level, from my understanding with the inspector and the staff sergeants, they, they hope that it never gets to that level because obviously there's a fairly significant impact financially as those fines increase. And that isn't a one-year period, so that isn't over, over the response call. It's in a twelve-month period. The inspector has the ability to override the call for service, so it would be under the last-minute extenuating circumstances. They had extensive conversations about this, and that was put in place as hopefully the deterrent that if the business is not willing to correct the alarm system through the financial impact, hopefully that the impact of the consideration that they may not have serviced for a burglary, it's nothing to do with fire, just make that very clear. It is for intrusion alerts, that if they could face a possible suspension, then they would be more apt to make that repair to their system. They are finding this across many bylaws within the province, that that is why that initiative is being put in place where money doesn't respond, that possibly the, the lack of response will.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. You okay with that?
Yeah, okay, I'm okay, but I still, who takes the liability and risk if there is?
The Lampton OPP.
Good point, though. Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
I think in a lot of other municipalities over the years, this has been in place. The OPP maybe haven't enforced it. Chatham Kent, I believe, has the same thing, that if it's a nuisance alarm, it's we have, they have a school that it's a constant nuisance alarm. They're sending two cruisers to it. This is where they actually will hire security companies to go there prior to, to let the police know that there's actually a problem. So this is, isn't new. It's a bigger issue that's happened a lot, and there is a lot of municipalities that are quite large that have been enforcement for years.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field, and I agree, this has been discussed for quite some time. Anything else from council? Chief Cousins, do you have anything you'd like to add to this? And you're okay with the rates and the fines?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, I'll call the vote. Did we read that, Mrs. Pearson?
I can read it again. If you wish me to.
Sure, read it one more time, then we're all clear on what we're voting on.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to adopt the report of the Director of Legislative Services Clerk Deputy Operations dated November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, regarding false alarm bylaws for the Lampton OPP and the Petroya Northern Skill and Fire Department.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, that'll move us on now to the report from Mrs. Mandy Pearson, Director of Legislative Services, Clerk Deputy Operations regarding committee updates for December two thousand twenty-four to November two thousand twenty-six. I'll ask for a move in a seconder to put that motion on the floor, please. Move by Councilor Hyatt, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to adopt the report of the Director of Legislative Services Clerk dated November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, regarding recent committee appointments, and that by law forty-nine of two thousand twenty-four be enacted as presented.
Thank you. And I just wanted to speak to, it's listed there, too. Special thanks to the one fifty anniversary that'll be running out this year. They've done a great job. So, and I see Denise is present. Thank you for that. Denise is the chairman of that committee.
Your worship, if I may, before you go to the table for discussion.
Okay.
There is the notation in the report of the one fifty committee was based on the original appointment. I was made aware that that committee actually had volunteers come forward after appointments. And so while they were not officially appointed by the town, they were very much involved in the community. So we, we thank everybody who came forward to participate in that committee and get things to the place where it was. I'm sure we'll have a recognition at another time, but being that that committee had concluded, we included it in our, our report.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Pearson. And on the list you had, did that include all the volunteers?
It did not, actually. There were several that had come forward after the appointments had been made, so.
All right, thank you. All right, any discussion from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll move us on to finance. We have a report from Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, regarding the third quarterly financial report. I'll ask for a move in a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Councilor Clark, seconded by Councilor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to receive and file the report of the CAO Treasurer dated the twelfth of November, two thousand twenty-four, regarding the two thousand twenty-four third quarter financial results.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Mr. Charlebois, before I open it up, do you have anything you'd like to add to this before I open it up to council?
Yes, thank you. This is our third quarter, takes us from one January twenty twenty-four to end of September twenty twenty-four, nine months. And we're basically on a good path to end the year, hopefully in a small surplus.
Thank you, Mr. Charlebois. Did I get, I'll need a move, I got a move in a seconder. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to receive and file the report of the CAO Treasurer dated the twelfth of November, two thousand twenty-four, regarding the two thousand twenty-four third quarter Q three financial results.
Any comments from council? Councilor Welsh?
Um, the, there is, I believe, a relatively new infrastructure fund, the housing infrastructure fund, not half, but HIF, I believe.
Don't give me a new acronym.
And I just wondered if that might be of any help to us also.
I'm not aware of that, but it was just announced that the money coming to the county for housing support has been reduced. I think from, and correct me if I'm wrong, somewhere around one point three million back down to six hundred thousand. So there's a huge hit at the county level regarding housing, social housing.
Oh, no, this is, this is for infrastructure to build homes.
Yeah, that, I'm not sure if that's the same thing or not. I know it's, but anyway, that'll come out at county.
I think, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Charlebois, please.
Through, through your worship, yes, that was just recently announced, but we won't hear about the details probably till budget twenty twenty-four at the federal level, federal money. I saw that go by, but we haven't received any word at all on it yet.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Welsh and Mr. Charlebois. Thank you. All right. Any other discussions from council? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us now to a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation and Facilities regarding the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority Watershed-Based Resource Management Study. You have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move in a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Councilor Patel, seconded by Councilor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to receive and file the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities dated November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, regarding the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority Watershed-Based Resource Management Study Strategy.
Okay, any discussion from council? I know Council O'Hara is our representative who sits on that, and he's not here tonight. Seeing none from council, I'll just ask, Mrs. Bullock, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nothing at this time, your worship.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us on to a report from Mr. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation and Facilities, regarding the Victoria Hall Roof Repair regarding the Victoria Hall roof repair. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities, dated November 12th, 2024, regarding emergency roof repair at Victoria Hall.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. As as stated, it was an emergency, that's why it was done quickly. Any discussion from council? All those in favor of approving that? Opposed, that motion carries. This brings us to the second opportunity to anyone wishing to address council. Is there anyone wishing to address council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to new and unfinished business. We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Joel Field regarding the Eureka Street lands. And again, this has been going on for some time. The notice of motion was provided on October 15th. I'll need a second to put that on the floor for discussion, seconded by Counselor Welsh. And again, this was to be actually dealt with tonight. Any discussion from council? If not, I'll call the vote. Oh, sorry, I'll have the clerk read that motion, please.
Whereas in April 2024, council previously was provided with the report regarding the surplus of lands known at, as Eureka Street, Plan 14, Part Lots 31 and 33, a registered plan 25R 10378, Parts 3 and 4. And whereas council tabled that report from staff with the item expiring before being able to be raised from the table. Now therefore it be resolved that the council of the town of Petrolia direct the clerk to proceed as outlined in April 2024 to declare the land surplus.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Any questions from council? All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That also moves us to, we have a, a motion from Counselor Chad Hyatt. Notice of motion regarding the backyard chickens. I'll need a second to put that on the floor, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion before I open that up for discussion, please.
Whereas this council recently heard at the October 15th, 2024 council meeting, delegation from two residents regarding requests to allow backyard chickens within the town of Petrolia. Now therefore, and now therefore be it resolved that in response to the delegations that the council of the town of Petrolia direct staff to move forward through a two stepped approach in providing all residents of the municipality an opportunity to provide input to council prior to any changes to bylaw regulations is undertaken. Step one is to conduct a public input survey exercise to collect responses from public input similar to what other municipalities such as Chatham Kent have conducted. And step two, followed by a public information meeting for members of the community to come out, hear about all points relating to the keeping of backyard chickens, and be able to provide counsel with their thoughts, concerns, et cetera.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Any discussion from council? Counselor Welsh.
Um, just how, I'm not sure who to address this to. How exactly will the survey exercise go out?
Okay, would you like to speak to that, Mrs. Pearson, or would that go through?
Thank you, worship, if I may, if I can refer to my colleague who does that great communications, we need to help her, but she would have the more detailed component of that.
Mrs. Ellsworth, go ahead, please.
Thank you, worship, through you. We would do a digital survey and a print survey as typical, so it's generally kept fairly simple through Survey Monkey, through all the outlets digitally, and then provide paper copies as requested or available at the counter. And probably in the connection.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellsworth, and again, to keep it short and simple, so it's, it's easily understood. Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. That'll take us on the consideration of the bylaws. I'll ask for a move and a second to have the bylaws read a first and second time. Move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Patel. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us, I'll ask for a motion to have the bylaws read a third time, signed, sealed and numbered. I'll ask for a motion moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Hyatt, and I'll ask the clerk to read that, those by, bylaws, please.
Please separate.
Sure.
Uh, to remove bylaw 47, 2024, and the rest can be
You want to deal with that separately?
I do, please.
All right, so we'll, if that's okay with the clerk, we'll deal with 48, 49 and 50 for the third reading, and then we'll come back to that. Okay?
Okay, that bylaw number, sorry, my move was, yes, that bylaw number 48 of 2024, being a bylaw of the corporation, the town of Petrolia, to impose fees and charges for services or activities provided by the Petrolia North and a skill and fire department in relation to false alarms, be read a third time and finally passed. That bylaw number 49 of 2024, being a bylaw of the corporation, the town of Petrolia, to appoint members of town council and town rate payers to various town of Petrolia committees and responsibilities, be read a third time and finally passed. That bylaw number 50 of 2024, being a bylaw of the corporation, the town of Petrolia, to confirm the resolutions and motions of the council of the town of Petrolia, which were adopted up to and including November 12th, 2024, be read a third time and finally passed.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. So we'll vote on just the bylaw 48, 49, 50. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving those bylaws? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us back to bylaw 47 of 2024. We do have a mover and a second, Mrs. Pearson.
We do, your worship, but that can be retracted as that mover and second, now that it's being dealt with separately, should, should, it should be moved and seconded alternately.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Pearson. So I'll ask for a mover and a second to discuss that bylaw. Move by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Patel. Okay, I'll open it up for discussion. Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so once again, still have a concern with the sixth false alarm in any calendar year. In the bylaw, it does not say that specifically, once the issue is fixed, that services will be returned. So it basically says, notice of suspension of service will be issued for the remainder of the calendar year. So if a business does fix the issue, are services returned? Is my first question.
Mrs. Pearson, go ahead.
Uh, yes, we understand that's the intent of the inspector, that once the, the, the whole intent of the bylaw is for compliance, once compliance is received, it would return.
Okay, thank you. Second question is, can bylaw enforcement actually go in and mandate a fix to a false alarm in a business as opposed to retracting service?
Pearson, please.
So the bylaw enforcement is the actual OPP enforcing it, so it is OPP enforcement.
All right, next question is
Go ahead.
If, is a business required to have an alarm service in order to have a business permit in the town?
Through, through your worship, Counselor Hyatt, no, that is not a requirement.
So I, I would still like to formally request that we amend the bylaw and remove sixth false alarm suspension of service to double the fee from the fifth false alarm.
So we can, it's, it's a bylaw of the Lampton OPP.
Okay, so then I would request we resend the bylaw back to the police services board and ask them to amend sixth false alarm.
I think, I think we're at this point, we'll have to turn the bylaw down, is that correct?
That would be correct, yeah.
I think what we'll have to do, if we vote on the bylaw, we'd have to turn that down. Then we can do maybe a, a separate motion to ask him to do that.
Okay.
Counselor Clark, go ahead.
Just a question, if a fine is imposed, after how many false alarms?
Six.
So, so then why, if the, if the business pays the fine, then the response should continue?
Through, through you, your worship?
No, that's not the way it's worded.
No, but
Through you, and the inspector has the oversight of this bylaw, so if a business is at the sixth false alarm and still is being fined and still is not correcting it.
But they're not giving them an opportunity, they give them the fine on the sixth one and then cut them off. So if they pay the fine, they should continue to provide the service.
Which, which can be addressed through the inspector.
Okay.
That's, the inspector has the ability to have pending circumstances.
Like, I understand, I understand the premise 100%. If they're, if they're not fixing it and they keep going back.
Right.
Then I understand either give them a fine and an opportunity to pay the fine and continue to provide the service, or then cut them off if they don't pay the fine.
So through your worship, the intent of the bylaw is the lack of resources that are being taken away through the OPP responding to false alarms. So there is no monetary incentive of the OPP for this. This is to garner compliance. As, as you will recall through the detachment board meetings where this bylaw was brought forward.
I, I do remember. Yeah, I would just comment back, though, I would hope if they paid that last fine that they, they wouldn't be cut off. That's just my thinking, that, that, that would be fair. Anyway, I'll go on to Deputy Mayor Field is next.
Um, so this is a service that the OPP provides for businesses. There is a great deal of businesses in this community that do not. They, when the alarm goes off, they call the key holder to respond to it, or they have an option to call a security company. They basically are asking the OPP to provide this service. If they have constant false alarms, it should be the OPP's right to refuse after a certain amount of time to not come to it. So there's only a few businesses, like right now, there's major businesses in Petrolia that only call a security company to come to it. There isn't a great deal of them that are having OPP attend. So they need that service, they need, if they want that service, they should be able to fix their alarms to get the service. So I don't believe that we should be telling them, we, we're not going to be able to collect for them on a component maybe, but really, this is their right to say what they're responding to. I don't believe we can tell them what they're going to respond to. There's a police service, so.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field, and I, like, I'm sitting here hoping we never get to that point. Anyway, Counselor Welsh, go ahead.
I mean, I realize it's the OPP, but is it actually legal for them not to respond to?
Let's go ahead, Mrs. Pearson, that was a good point.
That was brought forward at the police detachment board. It is actually not. If you're, if there is a process in place where there is compliance requested, and then that compliance is refused because it does take away from the services. So this is not a response to a medical emergency, it's not a response to an, a, a fire event or an emergency of need. It is a response to a burglary.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Field.
And just the last thing, so if we use this building, if there's multiple alarms that are going off in the middle of the night, it may be a setup with the alarm company to notify OPP that there is multiple alarms. They might only have key holders come during regular times, and I'm not saying that this, how this is set up, but it's a business that basically determines that there's a certain point for the OPP to be activated. The OPP are not activated for likely 90% of the alarms in Petrolia.
Through your worship, to further address Counselor Clark's concern, the OPP have made it very clear that they want compliance. If there's a business that is having an issue, that business can address that with the inspector to advise that if they're having difficulties getting a repair person or something to that nature. And the onus is on the business to identify with the inspector, the pending circumstances. And through the bylaw, the inspector has the ability to oversee or, or extend that, that ability to respond.
Well, the intent of the bylaw is to incentivize them to get it fixed, and, but the OPP is not saying that they're going to be very, they're going to exercise the rigidity of it, they're going to be flexible.
That would be a correct statement through you, your worship.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? Okay, I'll ask the clerk to read that one bylaw, being the bylaw 47 of 2024, please.
Being a bylaw of the corporation of the town of Petrolia to impose fees and charges for services or activities provided by the Ontario Provincial Police on behalf of the Toronto, the town of Petrolia in relation to alarms be read a third, third time and finally passed.
Last time, any further discussion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that bylaw? One, two. Those opposed? One, two.
There is three on the first one.
That man to approve.
Okay, so that, that, that carries. All right, thank you. And I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, please, until our next, our budget session. Okay, move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. All those in favor of adjournment? That motion carries. Thank you, everyone.